Okay, I call to order our special city council meeting workshop of July 20th. Second item on our agenda is discussion and possible action on the priority equipment needs by department, and I guess we're going to get a listing of that.
We have it.
Lee Roy?
Right here.
What we're going to do tonight is, you'd like? Everything we've been doing is leading up to our annual city council planning retreat. This is the last workshop leading up to that, and today we're going to talk about priority equipment needs by departments. And then on August 3rd, tend to believe we have scheduled a budget workshop at 6:00 that night to talk about our FY 2022 budget. We have... Each department has prepared their priority list of equipment, and they will go over it as each department makes their presentation. Feel free to ask them questions either during their presentation or at the end. I think we emailed it out to you this afternoon, this presentation, and we also provided a hard copy for you in case it's difficult to read and the numbers on the screen. So Kenny will be the leadoff batter, and we'll go from there.
So Lee Roy told me I could only prioritize three per department. I could have very easily prioritized probably a five-year, three priorities for all five years. But I'll make this as quick as I can. We'll start with the street department. Priority one, of course, we've discussed several times, is a street sweeper. Some of these items, we feel like we could possibly have some possible funding sources for. Our current sweeper is a 2007 model, and current amount to purchase a new one would be $255,000. A possible funding source that we're looking at is our FEMA reimbursements from the limb debris pickup. Priority two is a track. It's a Bobcat track machine. I provided some pictures for justification to go along with this. We'd like to purchase this machine as well as a 60-inch forestry cutter to go along with it. This is just one road. It's coal terrain coming down from Guthrie Lake, and we've got miles of road that looks like this. We need to start reclaiming our right-of-ways, our shoulders, getting some sunlight to some of our roads so they dry out quicker, make it easier to access, get a motor grader down them just to maintain them. And then our priority three for this department was equipment shed, and this would be shared between several departments at Public Works just to house equipment, and I've shared several pictures there showing equipment that we've got that sets outside on a daily basis. We really have to cram stuff in buildings whenever, during winter months, different machines that's got water on them and things like that that we don't want to get froze, newer equipment coming out with electronics on it, and then also security purposes. Our next slide would be fleet services. Priority one, we possibly have a funding source using the American Rescue Act funds. We're asking for a gas air compressor, a generator, and a crane to mount on the back of a, one of our one tons that the, we recently got from the fire department, one of the ambulances. This, again, would be shared for multiple departments, not only fleet maintenance. It'd be shared amongst our wastewater treatment plant utilized for pulling our pumps at different lift stations and at the plants, as well as later on in line maintenance, I'll talk about a insert valve machine, which all of these items would have to be used to operate that machine. Priority two is a pickup. This pickup here is a 2000 model, or 2002 Ford. It's hand-me-down from one of our other departments when fleet department, I believe their truck ended up in code enforcement or something like that, but we ended up handing this truck down from line maintenance to our fleet department to run parts. We're needing to replace this vehicle, and we look at doing that off a state contract. Priority three would be a generator large enough to run all of our building out there, our fleet building, as well as our offices at Public Works. Our current generator only will run a few of the outlets inside our fleet building and a couple of the offices upstairs. It does not run the full building. All of our garage doors are power-operated, and we have to use separate generators to open them during the wintertime if we lose power. And then I did add a fourth priority here to this department, and we would like to look into an aerial lift of some means to, for lifting heavier items. Limited staff in this department, it'd come in extremely handy, handy and could save someone's Our parks and polo grounds, priority one, we're looking at replacing two 61-inch, two 60-inch bad boy mowers. They're 2009 models. We'd replace them. We've got on here Ferris mowers, but that's recently changed after we've started getting some quotes. We're looking at possibly using a funding source from our remaining funds out of our 2022 budget year to replace those two mowers, and that will keep us in a rotation on our mowers that the parks department use. We'll be replacing three. Priority two is a 48-inch trim mower. It will replace a 2013 John Deere mower, 48-inch mower, and that mower, we have a possible funding source through our land water conservation reimbursement fund. It'll be for the in-kind labor that staff had did down when we did the land water conservation grant at Mineral Wells Park. Priority three is a 100 by 60 equipment shed. Currently, our parks department is scattered several different locations. At one point, they were in an 80 by 60, the structure here downtown. As we've shared before, there's been several times that we've had break-ins, items stolen. We've got them scattered anywhere from cemetery to Mineral Wells Park to the Blue House out on Prairie Grove Road, the little structure down in Mineral Wells Park, the little garage down there. There's just, they're scattered all over the place with equipment and machines that they have to use daily. Priority four is a one-ton dump truck. We're looking at replacing a, it's a 1994 Chevy three-quarter, or 3500 dump bed. This truck's 28 years old. It's had the engine replaced in it several years ago, and it's currently at the shop getting a transmission replaced in it as we speak. We would look into possibly purchasing this through state contract. Cemetery uses this truck when they're digging graves, it's, they use a smaller one-ton like this to maneuver through the cemetery, hauling off the spoils. Priority five for this department would be replacing our existing backhoe that they use out there. It's a 1999 model Ford, two-wheel drive. It's 23 years old. We'd look at, what we're currently looking at, several of these larger pieces of machinery that we're discussing this evening, trying to get some possibilities on lease purchase for some of our heavier equipment. We've got a current lease purchase that I believe we're two years from having paid off, so maybe combining some of our larger items and looking at an option in that direction for some of our larger stuff. Under administration, capital needs that I've listed, priority, we've got one priority, and it's just our building infrastructure. We're needing roof repairs really bad. We have to, about any time it rains, we've got about four offices that we have to move papers and things like that off of your desk, put buckets up. Water's coming through, you can see in this picture here, it's coming through and it sets in the light. Two of our offices, after every rain, we just about have to change out the ceiling tiles if they don't fall. This building has been through tornadoes, we all know. You can see the windows, they are not sealed up good. They're falling apart, the rubbers are coming out, as well as the metal structure around them, and then some just more cleanup type work in the restrooms and tidying that area Water treatment plant, priority one, we would be looking at replacing a 1999 Dodge. We, again, would look at this through state contract. This is the vehicle that David drives flushing fire hydrants daily, doing lift station maintenance and pump station maintenance. Priority two is a, replacing our current forklift. I believe it's a 73 model. We'd like to look at possibly replacing it with a electric forklift. This was a, we bought this unit used for our fleet department. It was then handed down to our water treatment plant, and what we're running into now is the fumes and the smoke that it puts off inside the building when it's in operation. It's utilized unloading chemicals and stuff down there at the water treatment plant. Priority three is replacing some of our chemical pumps. The white, the pumps there in the first picture, the white pumps, they are a master flex. They're becoming obsolete. We're wanting to, or what we're looking at doing is going to the new style peristaltic pumps. Everything's in one unit, as you can see in the white, you've got a control panel, and then you've got your pump down below it. The newer style, we've replaced some of them. This would replace the rest of them at our treatment plant and keep all the same model of pumps. Priority four, again, is roof maintenance or roof replacement. All the way around the edge of the treatment facility part of our water treatment plant, water comes in and pours down them walls, as you can see on the stains there on the walls, and as well as in the office area, pretty much the same thing as what we have at Public Works, ceiling tiles and everything in there. Again, it's a flat roof that we're dealing with. Wastewater treatment plant, this is, priority one is Don's machine here, which is a need that we need. Several council meetings back, Don brought up. We have got a possible funding source for this piece of machinery utilizing, again, some of the money, the reimbursements funds from the in-kind labor from the Mineral Wells Park project, from staff, work that staff completed down there. Priority two is purchase of a roll-off truck. This would be an addition, an addition to our fleet. We could look at this possibly as a used machine or a new one. Our new treatment process of our sludge at our new plant, as well as hopefully going to with our, at our existing plant to survive the next couple of years, going to require us to change out a 30-yard dumpster every 48 hours, which would either be contracted out, or if we was able to purchase our own truck, we can move those boxes, saving us from having to contract that out. But we should be able to generate a 30-yard box of sludge every 48 hours.
What are, excuse me, what are the costs of having that done?
So currently, we're paying waste connections under a contract for 30-yard dumpsters at the convenience center to haul them to landfill site. Kim, that's about $230 a box, is that correct? Right around $230 a box.
Every, every two days, you're going to pay that for that sludge?
Yes.
Well, that seems like a priority.
So I've got that as a priority too, and we possibly have a funding source as well through the American Rescue Act fund. Priority three would be upgrading lift stations, and again, we're kind of working with Myers, and we're getting more into kind of infrastructure-type things, bringing that up. Our convenience center, we're needing to look into an equipment shed to house equipment out there. Our current shed, you can't really see in the picture real great, but about half of the roof is missing. It has been missing since one of the past storms, windstorms that we've had. This roof has been replaced, I know of, about three times. Priority two would be looking into a track loader to replace our Huff loader. Parts are obsolete. That loader is a, is 35 years old roughly. Your drive pump, it barely moves, drive pump is about used up out of it. All departments use this machine loading dirt, riprap, rock, various materials at the convenience center to go to different job sites. We used to have a track loader, it was surplus many years ago. Priority three and four, we can kind of combine and discuss together. It's our two larger pieces of machine, machinery that the city has, our track, trackhoe and our dozer. Our dozer is an 85 model, I believe, or 89 model. Our track loader is in 2008. Both of these machines are needing some undercarriage overhaul. We rebuilt one of the sides on the trackhoe during the limb storm, but the other side's needing done. We're also needing to look into getting engine overhauls, whether we do just your top end or whether you do the full top end, bottom end, both. Our dozer, being an 89 model, we're looking at several options as far as, again, a full package lease purchase thing with, whether we look at replacement or overhaul with these machines, what would be the better thing? We're still trying to gather prices on some of that to see what would be our best option. Line maintenance, I believe, last department. Priority one is a hydro stop valve machine. This machine would stay with that truck that has the crane on it. We possibly have a funding source for this item through the American Rescue Act fund, is what we've discussed. This would allow us to have the ability to insert valves in our water lines where we don't have valves, or we have them that, and they don't work. This cost here includes a valve to go along with this machine, anywhere from a 4-inch all the way up to 12-inch, so we're not just purchasing just the machine, we're purchasing the valve and the mach, the valves for all sizes of pipe as well as the machine. There's only two of these, to our knowledge, in the United States, one in Minnesota and one in Texas. We do have the firm out of Texas coming in Monday to insert a valve for us so we can just simply get water to our existing wastewater treatment plant, because we've ran into a situation there to where we cannot shut the water off to do the eight-inch tap. So, again...
What does something like that run when you have to...
It's right at about $1,000 an inch on your pipe, so we're looking at probably about $8,000 Monday to have them come in and insert a valve for us. Could have come in handy on several of our lines, recent leaks that we've had, division, Magnolia Court, I believe, that area there that we wasn't able to shut down. Priority two is a six-yard dump truck. This would be replacing two trucks, an 85 model Ford and an 89 model GMC. The 89 model GMC is our line maintenance department dump truck, and the Ford is a six-yard dump truck that is in our street department. The 85 currently holds a sand unit and snowplow. That bed currently, you could, it has holes in the bed, rusted out, size of footballs. The 89 model GMC, it's on its second bed, and the frame is bent to where you can only load it about halfway, or you're not going to open the doors on the cab. We're looking at both of them being right around 37 years old. Priority three for this department is a six-inch trash pump equipped on a trailer. Anytime we need to get on a major leak, we have to rent one of these pumps. We do not have any. Several years ago, we surplus two 4-inch trash pumps, just due to the fact that they had reached their age. They were homemade. These pumps we've ran into recently, they're very hard to come by sometimes, even to get one rented. Priority four for this department would be trench and shoring box. Currently, we don't have any. Our means and methods is stair stepping our ditches and holes out wide enough to keep them safe for the guys, and there's several times to where this could be handy for the department. That pretty much wraps up all of our needs, and again, I could have probably put together a five-years' worth of list for you guys, so tried to speed through that. If you guys have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
What happened to the incinerator? We owned it, did it go home or...
To the incinerator?
The air curtain.
Trash. We sent that back. Yeah. I was told by DQ that air quality should be looking at changing that for Logan County.
So we won't need it in the future?
So we wouldn't need that thing, and then if an event ever did occur, we could always rent one again, but we sent that back.
You're saying the rules are getting ready to change, right?
Maybe.
Maybe. We're hoping so. Any other questions?
In the case of the hydro stop, I know when you did the repair comparison and division, you had to drain the system.
Yes, sir.
That was the only way. Was that also true with Magnolia Court, or you just...
No, we didn't end up draining the full system, but we went on, we never did get the water shut off on that leak. We did end up renting a six-inch trash pump from Herx Rental, and we had a, we had went from an area of Second and Noble down by the train tracks of shutting valves all the way out to Pine and, let's see, where were we then? Pine and, right there, Hillcrest area, and we never did get the full amount of water shut off of us.
Yeah, Don and I came out that day, but we had a cost associated with draining the system that presented in one, I think, my first meeting, and it's pretty extensive, so...
Yes.
Even that Magnolia Court, that went on for how long, that flowing like that?
We were there all night, well into the morning before actual repairs were made.
Daughter-wise, there was a lot of treated water went down the creek that day.
Yes, sir.
So that 90 grand's probably already paid for itself in rental.
Sure. And water.
And water, yeah.
Kenny, the, you read a lot about alternate fuel source things. I know you've got the electric forklift. What about compressed natural gas to any of these vehicles that you're talking about? Is there, are there some credits or cost reductions that are attainable through going that route?
There's none that I'm aware of, Mayor. We've just recently met with a, a firm, um, with compressed natural gas. When you start looking into that, there's a lot of limitations or restrictions that we, we're faced with, with only maybe one fuel, fueling site. Um, I believe Love's, has done away with their fueling, fueling site, um, and then working on those things, I don't know what that would entail, we'd probably have to look into that as well. I think the only fueling site that we would have for those would be out at the ONG site out off of Rule and Sigma, I believe, but-
And then fueling it inside the plant would be another issue.
I'm not talking about the forklift, I'm talking about other vehicles, you know, your, your trucks, your, even your, even your sweeper, sweep sweeper.
We just met, myself and Eric and Leroy just met with a, a sub, uh, gentleman that we could look more into that line with.
I just didn't know if there were some, some cost benefits that were attainable through that. I know they're oftentimes pushing conversions of gas motor, uh, vehicles called compressed natural gas, and there's some federal monies to do that.
We'll definitely, uh, look at all of our options. Thank you. Any other questions, Kenny? Alright, thank you, very good.
Thank you.
Alright, so, um, first of all, thank you for having me up here tonight. Um, I wanted to talk to you guys a little bit about the building services priorities. Um, the first and second priorities, they are, uh, really similar, so I'm gonna kinda talk, talk about those, um, together. So our admins, the, the Guthrie Admin Regional Airport currently doesn't have, um, any fire alarm system. Um, we did buy some fire alarms from Walmart so that that way there is some type of alert if there is a fire in the building, uh, but ultimately, there's not a lot of, um, a lot of resources there if there is a fire, especially if there's a fire that occurs overnight when there's not anybody in the building. Um, so the first priority is installing a fire alarm system, um, and that fire alarm system would include, uh, lighting, and it flashes in the event of a fire, an alarm, of course, um, emergency pull stations and a way to, um, communicate with our dispatchers so that that way the fire department can be dispatched to, to that location. Um, the second priority being City Hall, so City Hall does currently have a fire alarm system, uh, but that system, uh, was installed in nineteen ninety-six, um, and the average life expectancy for a fire alarm system is ten to fifteen years, so, um, we're a little bit overdue, so updating our fire alarm system, um, would get rid of, uh, some of the obsolete technology or some of the, um, technology that maybe has been recalled and not replaced in the meantime, um, and would allow the fire crews to be able to pinpoint, um, specifically where there's issues in the building. Um, for example, earlier this year, we had a rooftop unit that created a little bit of smoke in one of our, um, air ducts, and it took a little while for the fire department to figure out where that was coming from. Luckily, there was an emergency that time, um, but in the future, if there was an emergency, it would be really nice for the fire department to be able to pinpoint that. Um, both of those quotes, um, I received, I did pad them a little bit to also include a NOX box. Um, I did this, uh, I spoke with Chief Harlow a couple of months ago about the NOX boxes, and it's something that he highly recommends, um, and it's a box that you can put on the, uh, outside of the building that has a key that our fire crews would have, um, access to whatever they needed to get into the building in the event that it was after hours. Um, and then the third priority is upgrading our security system. Um, so currently, we have a, uh, entry system where if you're coming in, um, to the building after hours or, um, not through the main entrances, so some of the, um, uh, entrances that the employees use, it's currently a keypad system. Um, again, it was installed in nineteen ninety-six, um, and, um, some of the, some of the, most of it is working okay and well right now, but what we're seeing is we're starting to see those keypad entry systems start to fail. Um, and so the longer we wait, the more and more they're gonna not work, um, and that's gonna limit the entrance that we, the access to the entrance that we have into the building. Um, also, the software system is, um, not been able to keep up with the upgrades, um, so we've had to kind of keep one of our computers not upgraded so that, that way we could, um, still be able to use that software to be able to program, um, so there's obviously some programming issues as well. Alright, and then, um, for human resources, my only, uh, item that I've added was an updated human resources information system, um, and this would, um, allow us to process payroll a little bit more accurately, um, and then, so right now, there's a, a lot of room for human error in our current payroll and HR information system. It's all very manual data entry, um, and it's a very repetitive data entry, and so it just leaves a lot of room for human error. Um, getting a new human resources information system would just allow us to be a little bit more technology enabled, um, for example, would allow employees to be able to clock in. Right now, we still have a paper, um, timekeeping system, um, so again, once you have a paper timekeeping system, that paper goes from one person to the other and then it's a manual, um, entry, so room for human error. Um, and then also, it's just not time efficient and, and we, it's just gonna be an op, option for us to be a little bit more technology enabled. And that's all I have.
You say that there's some savings if we got rid of the existing system, how much would that be?
The existing payroll system? Um, not much, uh, if I'm honest, so I think we only pay about three thousand a year for our current payroll system, and then there's some, um, tax systems that we use, and those are about maybe fifteen hundred to two thousand a year, so I would say seven thousand tops.
Other question?
Alright, thank you. Thank you so much.
Actually, that was a good lead-in that Kristen had, cause our biggest priority for planning is a new permit system, uh, much like Kristen was saying, uh, there's a few things that that would help us with. One is general efficiency. The current system we have is basically an add-on, it's, it's really more of a finance, customer service type system with a add-on for the, uh, planning side of things. The new permit system or a new permit system would be specific to community development, the type of permits that we process in that, so there would be some added efficiency in that. There would also be much better reporting, tracking, editing, uh, the whole kinda nine yards. Uh, one of the other big benefits of this is it would allow us to go to an online portal, uh, where you can have plan submission online, pay fees online, uh, that's becoming more important for us because we're getting a lot of outside investment, and a lot of them are used to being able to submit online as well as pay. It also would allow for tracking of your inspections, so they would have a true customer portal where they could go to, check to see their, um, inspections for that day, uh, for it, uh, what they're, you know, whatever their permit's for. And then, the other thing that it would allow to is integration into our GIS. Uh, one of the things, uh, when I got here is I got the GIS mapping, got all that in-house, and we have a large, uh, uh, map, uh, large, uh, large format printer, uh, which has also been beneficial to some of the other departments as well, and then this would just kinda finish off that GIS end where we could also then integrate the permit system in there, and so again, on reporting, uh, mapping and different stuff on analysis, it would, uh, help it, but, uh, two of the main things were, you know, just general efficiency and again, going to an online, help us with our advancements in technology. Priority two is really part of priority one. Uh, the other element of the permit system is it would allow mobile apps so we could do more in the field, and one example is with code enforcement, right now, we have just your basic camera, they go out, take pictures, they come back, they have to download the pictures and then take, yeah, all the pictures and put them in the appropriate folders and that, you know, it doesn't take a lot of time, but it is taking up time, uh, in that, where these mobile apps would allow them to create the actual case files in the field, take the pictures, download them, so when he gets back to the office, he's already been, be able to do the letters and stuff and, and that, so again, it helps with more of the efficiency side, and so be looking at a couple iPads to help the inspectors in the field.
How, how do they integrate with your main computer systems that wouldn't necessarily question using Mac, right?
Well, they would, yeah, with, with this particular permit, with this particular permit system, it would integrate very easily.
The iPad and versus Windows?
Yeah, there, there, there would be compatibility there, and it wouldn't be an issue, cause they're really doing it through the app, so you could really do it on the phone.
So it's cloud-based?
Yeah, yeah, exactly, and that was the other thing I was gonna say with the permit system, is it doesn't require us to have any additional servers or anything, it's all cloud-based. And that's obviously part of the annual fee that would be paid for the service, is you're also paying for the storage of that data. And the last one was a flatbed scanner, and, and that one may become less of an issue, uh, if we get the updated permit system, uh, because one of the things that we'd like to do is digitize the plans, uh, so we have it, obviously, that saves storage, uh, physical storage space, and we are required to keep plans for a certain amount of time, but even after that, it's nice to have those digitized files, so, you know, five, six, eight years later, somebody comes in and says, hey, do you have that site planned for that, you know, property that we built our building? We have easy access to that, and again, uh, storing it in a manner that doesn't take up a lot of physical room. However, with the permitting system and online summittals and digitized summittals and that making it possible, we may not need the scanner because a lot of that will take care of itself, so. That's, that's my spiel.
Well, good job, Dan.
Shortest you've talked from that podium in a while.
Trying to get better.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Good afternoon. There we go, okay. So currently, the library has, um, public computers that are accessible for individuals that are visually impaired and those that are not, and in a, with those additions and other upgrades, our, uh, electrical panel is very dated, um, and cannot take any, any more electrical capacity put on it. Um, to my knowledge, it's at least, uh, several decades old, and, um, in order, if we were to expand, we, we cannot. So that is the estimate for that, and we have a security system, meaning, um, we can, we have several cameras throughout the library, um, to, for obvious reasons, to protect, um, library materials and even some on the outside, and that estimate would allow us to connect to the Guthrie Police Department so that way that they could access that information as well. Um, there are several accidents that happen on that corner where the library is, and there have been a few times where the police department have had to, uh, obtain that information in order to determine who was at fault. So we are asking for twenty-five thousand dollars. Questions?
So the Guthrie Police would actually see the cameras live?
Yes.
Where do you get the quote for fifteen thousand dollars? How many camera system is that?
Uh, right now, I believe we have seven, um, that would add an additional two plus con, uh, connecting it to the, um, police department.
So nine cameras total?
Correct.
Any other question?
Nope.
Great, great, thank you.
Hi there. So what I've done is, um, giving you an idea of what our projects, our capital improvement projects are gonna be over the next five years, I believe that that's probably our number one priority is to make sure that the city airport has matching funds for these projects. So to give you a start, in twenty-one, we are getting ready to do a preliminary engineering report, which will be a land acquisition for realignment of the parallel taxiway. This is funded by Oklahoma Air and Nautics Commission, a hundred percent. What that engineering report will do is if you look at the picture, the properties abutting the runway there, uh, identified as properties one, two, and three, will, like, this report will give us an idea of how much of that property and what portion will be required to, can, um, be able to do the preliminary report, and in the ultimate, the realignment of the parallel taxiway. In fiscal year twenty twenty-two, we don't have any planned projects. Moving on to twenty-three, the ideas from that preliminary report we do this, uh, year, we'll be able to identify how much of that property and then acquire some of that land if needed for this par, realignment of the parallel taxiway. Then we'll conduct an environmental assessment. This is a ninety-ten match, the FAA would pay ninety percent at two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. The total projected cost was three thousand, or, excuse me, three hundred thousand dollars. City match is ten percent, thirty thousand dollars. Then in fiscal year twenty-four, we'll do a design only and reconstruct the parallel taxiway and expand the terminal apron ramp. For the design only, that'll cost us about a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. Again, it's an MPE, uh, pardon me, FAA grant city match, which the FAA grant is our MPE non-primary entitlement funds, so they'll be paying a hundred and fifty thousand, then the city match sponsor is ten percent, at about seventeen thousand dollars. Then we roll into fiscal year twenty-five, our projected cost, what we're gonna be doing is a realignment of the parallel taxiway, our projected cost is four point eight to five million dollars. Again, that's gonna be a ninety percent, uh, match with FAA grant funds at four point three or a little bit more. Then the state Oklahoma Air and Nautics Commission will kick in five percent, grant at two hundred and forty, and then the city will be a match of five percent, and in the picture, it's showing where the future terminal apron would be, uh, where that block is, we're just terminal building straight west of that. Then get ready, since we've got the terminal apron reconstruction completed, we're ready to do our state-of-the-art airport terminal building in twenty-six. That estimated project cost is between one point seven five million and two, sorry, one point seven five and two million.
Hard to say, isn't it?
Yes, it is. So Oklahoma Air and Nautics Commission started a terminal program back in two thousand nine, about twelve years ago, referring to it as, you build a million dollar terminal building, we'll match you five, or we'll pay half. Well, since twelve years ago, the costs have gone up a little bit. The estimated cost that I got there was for approximately a thirty-three hundred square foot building, so it's, it's gonna change by the time we get to that point and be able to do that, but their maximum contribution will be five, excuse me, five hundred thousand dollars. Let me go back. Questions?
Wow.
Oh, let me, oh, sorry, one more thing I'd like to say is, um, the total of all those projects over the five years, for our city sponsor match is about eight hundred thousand dollars. So if we average that over the five years, it's about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, which-
Except the building, right?
No, that includes the building.
So that's two million, you say? You're paying half a million?
Well, I, I'm doing the five hundred thousand.
Huh?
If we do five hundred thousand for the terminal building.
Oh.
If we add it to all our city matches through the slides, all the, the-
Right.
Yeah. At five hundred thousand. You're correct, if it goes over that, it will be a little bit more.
Well, our partner pays a portion of that as well, right? Our partner pays half of that as well?
Absolutely, so all of our city sponsor match is half, uh, and the, our partner admin will be paying the other fifty percent, so it's even less for the city Guthrie. So it's even less for the city Guthrie.
I just wondered if the dude in that picture's here.
That's me. There's a lot fewer zeros in this presentation than the previous ones. As you all are probably already aware, all the work that Aaron Ryburn does has always been super important to what the city accomplishes. But it's even it's it's grown even more important in the last couple of years. What Aaron does in terms of video production really is the front door to our our city departments as well as just the community as a whole. And a lot of the equipment that Aaron uses to produce, you know, all of our promotional materials, recruitment videos, all those kind of things, those pieces of equipment are turning into dinosaurs. And it might not seem like a five-year-old camera is is old, but in in the world of electronics, those are those are pretty geriatric machines. If you look at things like the the camera that he uses for like photography and some short video stuff, it's about five years old and we need to start looking at replacing that. Not even just because it's getting old and it's going to start breaking down, but the as technology improves, we need to make sure that we're producing quality quality work, especially as we're competing with other communities for industries, those kind of things. And for just like for tourists, we don't want the other towns and other attractions across Oklahoma and the region to look super nice and gorgeous and 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 we look like we have 10-year-old cameras. Yeah. So like replacing a five-year-old camera, a few thousand dollars for like on the 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 long-form video end, replacing those cameras which are about nine years old, that each one of those cameras, we have two now. So those are about $3,500. This is this is where it gets a little bit complicated. In case you weren't aware, on our cable access channel, channel 20, there's programming 24 hours a day, every day on that channel. And a lot of it is, you know, city meetings, videos that that the city has produced, promotional type things. Also, Aaron collects a lot of content that's created, you know, from like Discover Oklahoma, whatever he can find, and he programs that out so people can watch that channel 24 hours a day. The equipment that enables us to do that is a lot of is around the eight-year-old range. And there's like 100 pieces of stuff. You can see like kind of his little, that's just part of his world there in that photograph. So there are a lot of things that are going to start breaking and stop working in that photograph. And we have to start figuring out how we want to prioritize replacing this equipment. Because if we want to continue to do exactly what we do right now, including that 24-hour programming, replacing all of those pieces, and we're not going to replace all of them at once, but all of them together will cost around $30,000. If we change priorities to where we just want to, you know, broadcast live meetings, whether it's you guys or other committee meetings, we want to do that on channel 20, social media. If we wanted to limit it just to that as opposed to 24/7 television channel, the the total of what we would replace comes down to about $10,000. So there's a big gap between those two priorities. So we need to decide what's important to us and whether that 24/7 programming is worth the extra cost. We've, in the past, we've asked Cox Cable for statistics on who who watches it throughout the day. And in the past, they weren't able to, they couldn't give us those numbers. We've reached out again just to see if technology could magically improve what they can give us. And we haven't been given a firm answer on whether they can give us those numbers or not. It seems doubtful that they can. So we have to try to figure out whether it's worth the cost. So that's something going forward. We don't know exactly what it's going to cost for us to start replacing this equipment, but most of that depends on the priority of it.
Which we'll have for the workshop that we're going to be doing in August.
Yes. I think just so we can get to Dawn and Eric before we're done here, I'm going to skip a couple of these. Shonda, you want to talk about some pop-ups real quick? So I'm going to skip a couple of these and let Shonda talk about one of them real quick before we bounce to other departments.
Good evening. Okay, so I have been here for about three years, three years now. And we've always kind of bounced around with the idea of a retail incubator. And in doing a little bit of research, we discovered that pop-up shops is a quick and inexpensive way, inexpensive way to kind of kick off the retail incubator. It would add some diversity to the shopping in our downtown and add a little bit of attractiveness there. So I'm requesting $12,000 that in my research, we could get some pretty basic outdoor sheds for about $2,000 each and that would get us about six shops. And that number could go up or down depending on what we want to provide. The picture there is an example of some pretty basic shops done really efficiently though over in Carlton Landing. They've done a great job with those so far. They've been really popular. And, you know, we could kind of go either way. We could get some pre-made garden shed type structures for roughly $2,000 each. Or we could order the materials and have a local contractor build them together for us. It's kind of just whatever we want to do. But that's a good rough estimate, I believe, to get us started and getting some pop-up shops downtown, being able to start a retail incubator and adding some diversity to our downtown shopping. That's all I got. Thank you.
You two got three minutes and 35 pages.
This one isn't mine, so I don't know who this is. They want to golf cart. I'm going around late? Are you sure? I didn't see any of that covered. All right. So number one priority for us kind of is the storm siren replacement. Two years ago, we had a study come in and done on the storm sirens. The coverage is poor throughout the city limits. The technology is dated back to the, some of the sirens are back to the 40s. And then a problem that is pretty severe is all of our storm sirens run off electricity. So the first time a tornado comes through or a big storm, what do you think happens? Electricity goes out. So where the storm sirens are dead as a doornail. The the second one is when I got here, I inherited a legacy camera system. And we built upon that because the foundation was already there. We're to the point now where we are replacing about half of the body warm cameras annually and probably about 20% of the in-car cameras annually. The the system is is poor, it's dated, and it needs to be replaced. That is a huge deal, especially in today's day and age. Those cameras are the single largest thing to build trust between a police department and the community. Without them, there is a perceived lack of transparency and honesty, and that hurts. Number three, we've talked about the radios before, so I don't want to dwell on that. I do want to tell you, probably in the last 14 months, through some grants and through some some of my budget that we had left over, we've purchased approximately 16 of the handheld radios. We just got approval the other day to buy two more. And then Kim and I were talking about some money in an old account that we're probably going to use to buy two more of those. So we're chipping away at those numbers. It's still a pretty big number. The camera system inside City Hall, if you look up here on priority four, you see all those blank blue screens? Those are dead cameras. You see the one in the middle that watches Kim's office over here? It it just flutters all the time, you can't see it. Of course, all of City Hall is a concern. Up here, especially where the money comes in and goes out, is a huge concern. And then we have to make sure that we have warrants up in the jail so we maintain compliance. Number five, our fleet is in immaculate shape thanks to the the spending that you all have done. I just need to keep that in the forefront of you so it doesn't fall off the the radar. We need one or two cars a year. Number six, probably you're thinking pie in the sky. We we really would like to install two or we would like to put automatic license plate readers at two main intersections in the town. We look at it as a force multiplier, helps gather evidence. It's cheaper by far than trying to add additional employees. And that is a huge concern right now. The police department's down 23.08% in personnel and communications is down 62.5%. We we are, we are doing our best to stay on top of that. And we we think this would help get us through this patch. We tried to hire two positions for two years. It's just not the job market right now. And then in the last month, we we are losing three employees. And and it's it's just the way it is right now. Everybody's hiring and we're not losing to poor places. We put out an exceptionally good product for a city our size. So we're losing to Edmund, we're losing to Oklahoma City, we're losing to Stillwater. We're not losing to anybody smaller, who pays less or anything like that. We're losing to to big departments that are hunting because we put out a good product. And then the last one is software. The only reason it's at last, it should be number one, is because we can't run that software until dispatch is pretty close to being full. And that software is vital for both the for the police, the fire, and medical side so that our dispatchers get the information that especially the medical people need when we put out the calls. Any questions?
What do you mean when until dispatch is full? Positions. The position wise?
Position wise, yes. I mean, when we're down 65%, they they are running, they're running whatever through the wall. I don't want to say a bad word.
Yeah, I get it.
Okay. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Eric only has about 35 seconds.
I'm not going to get it anyway, so I'll make a quick. Don, there's one of those other slides. Leroy had me split mine up between fire and EMS. So on the fire side, which anything station related is pretty much on the fire department side. Priority number one, we've discussed it for several years, is construction of a storage building out back. We haven't done anything because most of you guys probably know the volatile construction costs right now. Steel went through the roof, so we're holding off as those costs are trending back down finally. We do have part of the funding secured to do it, but we may end up needing more depending on how much steel costs come down. Priority number two, just like Tenny's department, we've got to upgrade our fire station generator to allow full operational capabilities. There was a station generator put in when that was built in 2004. It's like a 15 or 20 KW. It'll operate some lighting in the building and the overhead doors. That's it. We have no internet, no phones, no radios, no air conditioning or heating. All of that goes out when we lose power. Number three is goes right along with what Kristen was talking about over here at City Hall. Our keypad access system is about shot. We had to take one door's keypad completely off of it and basically leave it unsecured. It's an interior door, but we had to take the parts off it to make an exterior door work about three months ago because we cannot get parts for the system that we have. So we're proposing a key card style proximity access system. We've talked about doing this citywide. It's pretty cost prohibitive, but if we can start somewhere and start chipping away at it when they get to where it's a citywide system for our gates and our doors, public works here, fire station, anywhere, would be a huge benefit for that. Save a lot of man-hours with having to go out and rekey all those keypads if somebody quits or gets fired or you could just do it over the computer. Priority four, a, we need to put a membrane style coating like we've done on a few different other city facilities on our station roof. It's a metal metal seam roof. Currently leaks in several places at the seams and on the edges, one due to age and the other is due to some improper initial construction when that building was built in 2004. Every year, we're fixing little bits at a time as we discover more leaks. Priority five, it's it's ours, but it's not really our fault. But our parking lot, if you don't know, is shared with the school system for ballgames at Jelsma and Squires due to parking restrictions here at City Hall. We have several of Chief Swager's vehicles that have to stay in our front parking lot, which we suffered a lot of.
Quite a few.
Angry sports fans this year due to the lack of parking. So we do own a little bit of extra land where we could probably enlarge in our parking lot up front to maybe offer a little bit more space. And it may be something that we could work with Tenny's crews to try to do, you know, cost effectively. We don't have any kind of a cost estimate. I went ahead and threw it on there since it kind of affects multiple departments. On the EMS side, I've really only got a few things, but I know we just got two new ambulances a year ago. But unfortunately, with five of them, the mileage doesn't stop. Those two new trucks are not even a year old and both of them have over 20,000 miles on them. Our transfer truck, which is the truck on the top right, is a 2000 model. We bought it used several years ago. It's got about 150,000 miles on it now. What we'd like, all we use that for primarily is for transfers from our hospital to other facilities. It's a smaller, lighter, non-four-wheel-drive truck for what, running up and down the highway, back and forth to those remote hospitals. It does, it serves its purpose. It's not what you want to work a full arrest on somebody in the backup but for hauling somebody from out here at Logan to one of the city hospitals or Tulsa hospitals or somewhere like that. It it fits the bill. What we would propose to replace it with would be a like a Ford Transit van style truck. They're much cheaper to operate and the initial cost is much cheaper. You can ask, also get one of those in four-wheel drive. So if it had to be used in inclement weather, it could. It's not much more to add that feature to it. Priority number two is replacement of one of our power stretchers that you see down on the bottom left. Of the five that we have, our oldest one was bought in 2012, so it's rapidly approaching the 10-year mark. It's lifted a lot of patients in those 10 years and mechanical things start to break down. So every year, we're doing more and more maintenance on those older cots. So we'd like to.
We did replace some of those, didn't we?
We didn't replace the actual cots. We just put the power load devices on the new trucks. We already had the cots, we just retrofitted them to use it.
How many is that place?
One.
Okay.
Yeah.
This transfer ambulance, last time we bought ambulances, you and I.
We talked about a big one for that. The problem we run into with those big trucks is some of the hospitals, those big ones will not. That's why nobody around here runs them because they won't fit in some of the metro hospitals. Tulsa area is a different story. Several departments have ran them, Broken Arrow ran them, they went back to Fords because it wasn't cost effective. And if we were running, like Ponca City has a big freightliner similar to one of your records, but they're running to Wichita, to Tulsa, Oklahoma City, their transfers are a lot more time prohibitive than ours are. I mean, ours are pretty quick. This is a smaller, I use the old.
I just hate to keep getting these little flimsy suckers and flicking them off.
That's a throwaway truck though. I mean, it's under $100,000. That's actually what a friend of mine, another chief, he calls it a throwaway. The problem with, even if we bought an international freightliner, two-ton style ambulance, you're still going to have to remount the box and our new chassis at some point. And that costs over half the cost of a new truck and just the maintenance costs.
So our understanding didn't mean nothing.
No, it did. I thought you meant not for a transfer truck, but for an actual 901 truck.
You said when we replace the transfer truck.
Okay. Ponca City just bought another one, $300,000 versus probably less than 100. So if I ever get the money to replace it, we'll talk. But I don't see us getting any of this, but I was told to present it to you, so that's what I'm doing.
All right.
Priority number three is our oldest big ambulance. It's now, it's a 2013, so it's eight years old now, just shy 200,000 miles on it. I will say that the Dodges have been pretty phenomenal in terms of maintenance. They haven't really given us that many problems. This one in particular did shatter the transfer case. It was just a weird Dodge anomaly. They ate part of the repair cost on that.
Something I've noticed on most of what you got there, Eric, is there's not any funding sources.
Well, there's a good portion of it that didn't get funding sources. Police Department didn't do it.
Excuse me?
Police didn't do it.
Yeah, well, yeah.
That means they need the money. That means they don't have.
I understand, I understand.
I think what we can do if we can get Case to donate the electric panel in the libraries, that'll give us enough to do these up. There you go.
I will go back to that subject. On the station generator, there are FEMA hazard mitigation funds that actually could probably be looked at for both Tenny's generator at his facility and ours. David Ball, our former emergency manager, was working on some of that before he left his position. I did text him tonight to ask him if he knew if there was any funds available right now. He's going to get me in contact with the guy at the State Emergency Management Office to start discussing that. So there may be some opportunity there to get some of that. On that stuff, yes.
We may be able to sharpen it up for the workshop and be able to get a little more intel on it.
I'm just curious, I mean, obviously none of us were sitting up here in 2004. Maybe title it, I'm not sure.
Probably.
Why was that not a priority then during construction of this? Why was that not a priority then during construction of this?
Tenny, you were, I'm sure you and Cam are probably the only two that worked for the city.
What are you talking about, John?
The emergency power. The emergency power, I just don't get why during construction. I just think it needs to be noted going forward for construction.
That place was a nightmare. The city ended up eating the punch list items and not paying the final payment on that building because there were so many issues when they did the final walkthrough on that thing.
Your fire department.
Yeah. Maxine Crew, she could read you a novel on the problems they ran into when they were finishing that place.
Just got flat roof, right?
No, it's angled. It's a metal seam roof. And what we got told by a couple of metal building contractors was the overlapping should be like this going downhill.
Oh, no. It's the other way. So, the water
So, the water's running down at the seams. And it's not that way everywhere. They sealed it, but over 16 years now, that silicone is starting to flake off. The worst problems we've had are where the flashing makes a 90 and goes up on my carpet wall on the end, so. But the generators thing, we discovered, I discovered it a month and a half after I started with the tornado. One of our radios shut off. We had no heat and air for three or four days. At least the doors, I mean, the doors function and we have a couple of lights in each room. It's literally a household-sized generator.
Oh, really? So, it's not even big enough to handle?
No, it's, it's not that one.
Any other questions, Chief?
Thanks.
All right, thank you. I'd like to thank all of the staff for obviously the hard work that they did in putting these presentations together, putting the priorities. A lot of work went into it. I think it shows all of us and the public, you know, just what it takes to continue to continue to progress. And if we're not progressing, we're losing, and we don't want to do that. If we're staying, if we're standing still, we're actually losing, and we don't want to do that. But it doesn't come without price tag. So, appreciate your sharing with us, your thoughts, your priorities, and your efforts, and we'll be obviously taking that up when we deal with budget. Leroy, last comments?
I don't have anything. It's time for the next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
I adjourned our workshop. I call to order our Guthrie Public Works Authority meeting. Actually, we need to go ahead and we will stand for a salute to the flag. Having that, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Remain standing for the prayer, please.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as the people of Guthrie, and nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace, Lord God, as we make decisions that might affect the government leaders, cities, staff, the businesses, and citizens of Guthrie, Oklahoma. Continue to remind us that all we do here today, all that we accomplish is for the pursuit of truth, doing the right things for the greater glory of you, and for the service of humanity. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. And now I officially open our Guthrie Public Works Authority meeting of July 20th. Public comments, community announcements, recognitions. Do we have any? Nobody submitted anything. Item number three, consent agenda. Items A and B. Item A is the approval of the minutes of the Public Works Authority meeting of July 6th, and B is the approval or renewal of the master task order agreement with Myers Engineering. Those are both on the consent agenda.
So, moved.
I'll entertain a motion in a second. Have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes, please. See the votes. Unanimous approval of the two consent agenda items, A and B. That being the last item on that agenda, we adjourn, and I call to order our city council meeting of July 20th. Our consent agenda items, A, B, C, and D. A is the approval of the minutes of the special city council workshop of July 6th. B is the approval of the minutes of the city council meeting also of July 6th. C is the approve, the renewal of the City of Guthrie master task order with Myers Engineering. And D is the approval of Hanger property lease agreement with Rutherford, Rob Rutherford to lease a site, number 24C. I'll entertain a motion
So moved.
And a second. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes.
All votes are in.
See the votes. Unanimous approval of the consent agenda items, A, B, C, and D. Item number three, discussion, possible action to approve resolution 2021-20 conveying ownership of property located on northwest corner of Drexel Boulevard to the school district. Leroy, are you handling that?
I can. At one time, the city owned a small parcel of land, and there was actually a city swimming pool on that site. The city has removed, of course, that swimming pool, and there is a school building on part of that site now. I think part of the confusion back in 1954, there was a quitclaim deed from the school, and it said, "So long as the above described is used and operated for municipal purposes by the city." Well, when we removed the pool and quit using it, I think some people interpreted that our deed went away. To clean this up, we asked the school attorney and our city attorney to get together. It's not big enough for us to do anything with. Part of it's already covered by an existing school building. They've been maintaining it.
They thought it was theirs all this time anyway.
Correct. And this is just to clean up the property records.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve a resolution 21, or 2021-20. Submit your votes.
All votes are in.
See the votes. Unanimous approval to approve resolution 2120-20. Item number four, discussion, possible action to establish a new bank account with F and M Bank for the capital equipment fund.
A lot of communities have both a capital improvement fund and a capital equipment fund. Some of the advantages, when we do in-kind labor for FEMA reimbursement or the land and water conservation grant, this will allow us to move that money in the equipment fund rather than put it in other funds, and it get confusing. It's designated for equipment. When departments like Tenny, who has vacant positions and rolls that money over for equipment, well, if you leave it in the general fund, it loses its identity when you roll it over. If you put it in this fund, it retains its identity, and you don't have to spend it in the same budget year. You can do it the next budget year. We won't be spending it out of the sales tax capital improvement fund that we tend to use for public improvements and not equipment. When we have that money sitting there, it gets confusing. Well, is that sales tax CIP or is it leftover funds? So, this will segregate that out more so that the equipment will be paid for out of this fund and not the sales tax capital improvement.
Motion to approve. Second.
A motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes.
All votes are in.
See the votes. Unanimous approval to establish that capital equipment fund with F and M Bank. Item number five, discussion, possible action to approve budget amendment number two, meaning the budgets for the grant fund and the capital equipment fund. Leroy?
Through our in-kind labor, we generated $53,703 of reimbursements for our labor and equipment out of the mineral wells project that we will now be using to buy equipment for public works, and this is moving it from the grant fund over to the equipment fund that we just created.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes. See the votes. Unanimous approval to approve budget amendment number two. Item number six, discussion, possible action to confirm mayor appointment of Matt Crum to the Guthrie Board of Adjustment for a three-year term through May 31st of '24. Chris Evans to the Guthrie Board of Adjustments for an expired term through May 2023, and Daniel White to the Guthrie Board of Adjustments for an expired term through May 31st of 2022.
So moved. Second.
A motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes.
All votes are in.
See the votes. Unanimous approval for Mr. Crum, Mr. Evans, and Mr. White, and thank members of the council for assisting with that recruitment to those positions.
Let's do seven.
Item number seven, we're voting to approve something.
The city manager.
It's city manager's choice.
Oh, okay.
No, we inadvertently left out on there. It should have been strictly.
That's your first mistake I think you've ever made.
Well, it's city manager's choice. I can bring up either.
Okay, so city manager report then.
I don't have any additional report tonight.
Okay. Council, vice chair Case.
Ah, sad to see Byron go. That was a, that was a really bad thing to happen for him. Such a big part of Guthrie. But I really don't have a lot to say tonight. I guess that's about all I wanted to say.
Councilman Long?
I'm happy to see the barricades gone on. East Harrison, how beautiful is that? And also, just, we've got our second Red Brick Night, so it'll be coming up in August. First Saturday in August.
Something to look forward to. Councilman Taylor?
Thank you, staff. I know this is a lot of work tonight. I appreciate you all bringing things forward so we can kind of get an idea of what's going on. I think everybody else agreed to that. There'll be more in our August retreat, but thanks, guys. I really appreciate that, guys and gals.
Councilman Williams?
I have nothing.
Councilman Channel?
I'll just defer to the wisdom at the other end of the table.
Councilman Bothrow?
Yeah, a lot of work went into this. I'd like to see if we can really hone down for our works. Tenny, you've got a lot in here, I know. You need it all. But I would like to see our workshop be able to really come up with not just a wish list, but something that's gonna happen, you know, and the funding sources behind it, obviously, which I know we're looking at, and I do know. It's a lot of work. I give you that.
And I think one of the things is to make sure this list of equipment, that you're all supportive, that you agree those items are needed and they are priorities. There's a multitude of funding sources that we utilize, so sometimes we don't know exactly, but each year, we're eligible to apply for a USDA grant. And so, we're doing that now every year, so that will provide some funds. This year, we applied for a portion of money to buy the street sweeper. We don't really know what we're gonna use it for next year. It depends on what's eligible. The budget balance, when departments have vacancies or save on material costs, we allowed them to move part of that to equipment purchases that now will transfer to the new equipment fund. In-kind labor on grant projects like water conservation fund, the FEMA reimbursement on pickup. It's hard to project. We don't know when the next opportunity will come, but we try to use that to the best our advantage. The Voca grant that we get for the police department, we've set it up instead of leasing cars from someone else, we set up the system where we lease the cars from ourselves. And so, every four years, we buy one or two new cars, the cars that we've leased ourselves through the Voca thing, and that frees it up to create a car for the police department rotation that doesn't have a lot of miles on it. So, you know, we're trying to, not to be funny, but sometimes it feels like we're rubbing two nickels together in my quarter. But some of it is hard to give exact numbers. We just have to, here's our priorities. When we see opportunities, we present it to you all, that we've worked it out to make these things happen.
Yeah, I know it's a monumental task. There's no question, so.
Any else, Brad?
Just a couple of things. The, well, congratulations to Myers Engineering and Bill, you and your staff being part of Team Guthrie for another five years.
We appreciate the opportunity.
Congratulations. And we have vacancies in the airport board and parks board and historic preservation. So, if you have an interest in any one of those three areas, which covers a broad range of the area, please look, go into the city website and take a look at what those boards commissions do. The application is on the website also, but we do have some opportunity to get more engaged directly with city administration.
Parks and HPL.
And airport. And with that, we adjourn, and we open yet again, we open our fourth meeting of the day, our special Guthrie Economic Development Authority meeting, and we have a consent agenda item A, which is the approval of the minutes of the special Guthrie Economic Development Authority meeting of July 6th.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Submit your votes. See the votes. Unanimous approval of a consent agenda item A. Item number three, consider approval to convene into executive session pursuant to discussion of the airport.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Submit your votes. See the votes. Unanimous approval to move to executive session to discuss airport business. Back shortly.
Back shortly. I'll entertain a motion to come back out of executive session.
So moved.
Second. Motion in a second, submit your votes.
All votes, right?
See the votes. Unanimous approval to come out of executive session. Item number five, consider action regarding the Guthrie Regional Airport, inclusive but not limited to acquisition of real property. I think we have a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we purchased the property for $480,150, I believe, 44.92 acres from, his name again?
Damon Wells.
Damon Wells?
Wow.
Correct, the Wells, that's my motion.
Second that.
A motion and a second, any other discussion? Submit your votes.
All votes, right?
See the votes. Unanimous approval then to move forward with the acquisition of 44.92 acres of land adjacent to existing airport land from Mr. Wells for $480,150,000. Item, let's see.
No action on the next item.
We got joint, the other item that we discussed was the joint operating agreement with the City of Guthrie. No action is taken at this time for that, ladies and gentlemen. We adjourn. Thank you. We really don't have anything going on after this.
The Blue Bell Bar, one of the most popular of the numerous saloons in Guthrie during territorial times. The Blue Bell was an 1889 enterprise of John Selstrom and Jack Tierney.